Okay, I'm at seven o'clock and I called the meeting to order here. Couple of housekeeping things, cell phones, make sure they're off or silenced. We'll have time for public comment at the end of each presentation, so hold your questions till then. But otherwise, let's get the meeting started here. We'll start off with the approval of the June 10th planning commission meeting minutes. Everybody had a chance to review?
Yes.
Yes.
Corrections?
I have none.
No changes or corrections? I recommend approval of minutes.
Second.
Okay. All right, all others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Action plans, we're going to move that one down, Steve Mylar's signature at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, they're all on the table there.
Okay. All right, first up Butter Creek.
Hello, my name's Alex Hughes. I'm with the Crossroads Group. I'm here for the Butter Creek subdivision project, representing the applicant, Tim Snyder. The site address is 2405 Camp Rock Hill Road. Currently, there is a 13 lot approved subdivision on this property. It's about a 54 acre property. We're coming back in with a six acre subdivision for approval. It's zoned in the RC Residential Conservation District. You can skip to the next slide. The lot is majority woods. The northwest corner has some lawn and existing barn with a driveway that's existing. The barn is going to remain as part of the subdivision and some of the driveway around it, but the main part of the driveway is going to be reconfigured with the proposed subdivision. Along the southern side of the lot, there is a, oh well, Butter Creek flows through it. There's a bunch of steep slopes, wetlands, all that stuff that's protected, so we're not really touching the southern half of the lot. And we also have road frontage on Butter Creek Road, but as I said, the flood plains, wetlands, creek, all that makes it impossible to access Butter Creek Road from this area. So the majority of the proposed lot, or all the proposed access comes from Camp Rock Hill Road. There is an existing storm drainage easement that goes through the eastern side of the lot that we will be reconfiguring to include our proposed stormwater as part of the subdivision, just so you know about that. I believe that's it for the existing site. You can go to the next slide. We got a review letter from Wynn dated July 25th, 2025. The majority of the items in here are a little bit of note cleanup, but everything's will comply, other than the waivers that I want to discuss. I don't have any major points to discuss as part of the letter unless you guys want to bring something up, but the majority of what I would like to discuss this evening is the waivers and potential approval.
Okay, so other than 12, I can't see behind it. 12, CD and 13.
Yeah, so that's all will comply. The township stormwater calculations, we met them. I'll just make sure they're highlighted in the report, so Steve can review them. The landscaping, we have no problem with that. We'll add landscaping to the basin. Right now, we weren't showing anything other than just naturalized grasses and stuff like that. And the sewage planning has been taken care of by the applicant. We will get the township, whatever required documents they need. It's been with the Health Department, all the planning modules, all that stuff is approved, so. We can get Steve what he needs to make that comment be addressed.
I mean, should we go through the whole?
Yeah, typically.
Let me just go through the.
Preparation prefers if you at least touch on each item.
Okay.
You can summarize it. You don't have to.
It's a will comply, just indicate that.
No problem. The first two are submission requirements. We got those resubmitted when I requested to be on the meeting, so I believe those have been taken care of. Discussion item three, this is for the configuration of the lots. Including the fact that we only have two narrow strips to bring access in on. So we're showing 25 foot wide lanes. Basically, this is a waiver that I'll touch on later in the, unless you want to do that as we go through them. Up to you guys.
I don't know, can you expand upon it maybe and show us, do we have a slide or something that we can see?
If you skip ahead a few slides, yeah, here we go. So if you look at the configuration of the existing lot, it's kind of irregular. So it's hard to get rectangular lots and have access to the roads on a lot like this. So the main gist of the waiver is there's a bunch of requirements for length to width and depth and all that stuff. And it's just impossible to meet on an irregularly shaped lot like this.
Sure.
And get frontage.
Okay, that's fine. And I believe on the waiver request, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, it's six of the seven had been previously approved?
In, it would approved in one form based on the.
Prior form, on the 13 lots.
The cut, the the section is the same, but it was, you know, the improvements were a little bit different because of the different layout. And just to refresh everybody's memory on all these what appear to be lane lots is they're mostly not lane lots because they have frontage on Butter Creek Road. They're just not taking access to Butter Creek Road. They're taking access, access, the Camp Rock Hill Road through the narrow lanes. That's why that's not a zoning problem with the 20 foot lanes where we usually have a minimum of 25. Because technically, that's not the access. You know, the zoning access to the lot is the frontage on the other road. We talked about that a lot back when we were looking at different sketch plan alternates. I just wanted to remind everyone that that's how we ended up with this configuration.
The next one is the floodplain. This is just how it's delineated. We'll get the required information on the plan, so this is a will comply. The floodplain runs through the south part of the lot. You can kind of see like there's a darker dashed line that shows where the floodplain is on this, on this view.
Yeah, at this point, it's just that the female map is, it's in a, referred to as an approximate floodplain that doesn't have elevation, so there's, there's certain procedures to basically ground truth that, make sure that it makes sense on the ground. And that's what they've done. We just asked them to note that on.
Yep.
Just a quick question on that. The lot shape for lot number four, or I'm sorry, three is, um, yeah. Oh, excuse me, four is kind of funky and it juts down there. Is that due to the floodplain?
That's to get the frontage on, the required frontage for the zoning requirement. All along Butter Creek Road.
Thank you.
Number five is about the natural resource calcs and mapping. We meet these calculations. I just didn't have them on the plane. We discussed this with Steve. We should be good to go. I just got to add it to the plan, so that's a will comply. Six is the draining easement that I brought up before. It's hard to tell on this, this PDF. It's a little blurry, but the right half of lot five and the right half of lot six down through the creek is all under an existing drainage easement. So we're just modifying it to include our stormwater basin that is on lot three, uh, four in this central area here. For the main, the main basin is that will handle all of the proposed lots. So that's a, also a will comply. Seven, this is about the use of the existing barn. I believe the applicant has discussed this with you guys before. He's currently using it. Once the lot is sold, obviously, he will no longer use it. That will get handled with at that time. Eight is a let's see, this is a comment about impervious surface area. We did design to have an additional allotment of impervious area on each lot, so that can go towards a larger house, a shed, a patio, anything like that. But we did design the stormwater basin with that. Nine is about the shared driveways. This came up in previous iterations of the plan before, whether it was a road like the approved 13 lots of vision or going to a shared driveway. I believe this is the one that everybody agreed was the best way to proceed forward at the time. So this is what we're showing. Lots five and six share the driveway just at the beginning. But lots one and two and three and four go a little bit farther into the property with the shared driveways. And eventually split off the driveway, the shared driveway splits right down the center of the property line where it's shared. But there is easements over top of the driveway to provide access to the corresponding lot that it's, that's not on. And I believe this is waiver number seven. Essentially, going back to what I said before, we're taking access this way, given the creek at the bottom, the floodplain, the steep slopes. You're going to disturb a lot more natural resources if you try to bring access in from Butter Creek Road.
Do you have the ability to split the driveways?
There's, there's not really enough room and then meet the separation. There's a separation requirement between driveways in the township ordinance.
There is enough room to separate them on the 20 foot stretch, yes.
There might be additional waiver for the separation.
Yeah, I believe so.
So physically, it can be done, yes. It might be just a different waiver that's required to get them separated. Now, they need waivers to combine them, and because of the restrictions, they would need a waiver to separate them.
Yeah, I mean, it's not ideal, right? I mean, shared driveways, especially this length. I mean, a lot of problems that can happen.
Potentially.
Is this going to be like an HOA or anything, or? So maintenance on the driveways and everything is going to be up to the homeowners?
All right, as referenced towards the end of number nine, should the, have to be agreeable to the shared driveways, it would be required to be an easement over that whole shared driveway area. And while it's not an HOA, usually typically those easement documents would spell out who's responsible, or is it a 50 50 share, or whatever the responsibilities are for the driveway would be in that easement document.
And there are some provisions in the ordinance to allow for shared driveways given unique lot configurations, and I believe we meet all the requirements. There's only two houses per shared driveway. It goes right down the center of the property, the width requirement, all that stuff, paving within the right way.
Well, we could have got through the rest of the letter and then revisit it with the waiver, so you could see the totality of the issue.
Okay. That was number nine. Number 10 is a site distance comment. We provided site distance calculations on the plan. There is a potential that tree clearing may be needed. We're willing to put entries that would be necessary to achieve the required site distance, but I don't believe it's, it's much clearing. And then there is no driveway culverts proposed. The lots currently drained back into the site. We're going to maintain that current drainage. There's no roadside swell where you need a culvert. So the majority of that comment is, well, that comment is will comply. 11, the MDS permit was approved for the site, so that's a will comply. We got the required approvals. 12 is the stormwater control, the summary chart. I'll make sure that I point that out to Steve in the report. We meet the rate requirements for the stormwater ordinance.
I like it right up front so I could find it.
That's fine. Erosion control matting, this is a waiver we're asking for. The township requires concrete checker block lining on the spillways of basins. We're proposing a permanent liner. The reason we're doing so is they're visually more appealing because it grass fully grows through it. They're easier to install and maintain than the checker block. They don't require heavy equipment to install. And it'll just blend better with the natural woods behind the basin. Another thing with the checker block is it could eventually crack and crumble, and the concrete could get washed down into the creek with the matting. You don't have to worry about that as much. If it does need replacement, just put more matting down and reseed it. It's not, you don't have to worry about concrete removal or that getting washed in the creek, anything like that. So we're asking for a waiver to install a permanent matting. It still meets all the shear and velocity calcs required for the spillway. Just a different kind of matting. Township requires concrete checker block.
Want my two cents?
Please, sir.
The concrete checker block is an older standard that we've had in place for years. There is a lot more products available now as an alternate. I had a discussion with Jeremy from your office. I'm not opposed to it. I just but I'd like the final approval on what product is used. We don't like just like the P300 matting or something. There's other Geo webs and
Yeah.
and what I'm going to call better.
Yeah, we had, we had a permanent one aspect, I believe, on the plan, and the Conservation District did approve it as part of the MB does permit as well, so.
Yeah, right. It's Conservation District. So my final comment is it's not that large of a basin that I'm worried about, you know, really a structural problem, as long as we have final say on the alternate.
And we're fine with that.
The alternate material, that's fine with me.
Okay. C township water quality, recharge and stream bank erosion calculations. I'll get that in the report. We meet all those requirements. Basin landscaping, as I discussed, we had a naturalized grasses as proposed, but we can add the townships required landscaping. That's a will comply. E is operation maintenance. That's a will comply. That'll get taken care of after approval or as part of the conditional approval. 13 is the sewage. I discussed on that a little bit earlier. We have most of those approvals in place. We'll make sure we get the required documents to the township. 14 is the original waivers that were on the old 13 lot approval.
Going back to 13, the beginning part of that, the lots or the septic areas being close to the other properties, Steve, that's, do they have to be within the setback or like inside the setback or, I noticed a couple are like right on the, like right on the property lines.
You do not have that requirement in your ordinance.
It just looks like a couple of spots that go to the secondary is like really, it looks like it's right there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it is the secondary systems, like the primary systems are pretty well centered on the lots.
And there's, there's a lot of space on these lots too. They're large lots, so if something were to ever fail.
I think because of the old plan, several lots have more than two on them. Because of the old, all the old testing that was done.
This is West Rock Hill. Just making sure we're talking about ways.
So 14, I'll go through the rest of the waivers then, but the part about the cost assessment, we'll take care of that as part of the process. That's a will comply. 15, fee and lieu for recreation, that's a will comply. Monuments installation, that's a will comply. More financial agreements are will comply. Legal descriptions for 18 is a will comply. Withdrawing the 13 lot subdivision, if this one's approved, is a will comply for 19. And 20, yeah, we will resubmit to Bucks County Plan Commission. That's, that's a will comply as well. So the additional waivers that weren't touched on in the letter that were previously approved. Waiver two, three and four are all kind of go hand in hand for cartway width, curves and sidewalks. For Butter Creek Road, it's not feasible to install any of this stuff, given the creek and the floodplain butt right up against the road itself. And also, there's no curb sidewalk or I guess the cartway width currently matches the rest of the road. So there's not really any reason to expand it. It, it matches the the existing area. Along Camp Rock Hill Road, same deal. There's no curbed sidewalk anywhere along Camp Rock Hill Road. The cart width matches the existing cart width out there. We are having some areas of widened pavement near driveways one, two, three and four that will get a little bit wider, but that's just as the entrance of the driveway.
It wasn't even talked about that in the last rule.
There was, at one time, Tim, right with some of the prior versions of this plan, you were offering some road improvements.
But you're.
The widely on Camp Rock Hill was the original, and then we did blacktopping on Camp Rock Hill. I think originally you were supposed to scarify into Butter Creek, and I came to the meeting and then they later bumped it to Camp Rock Hill. And then there was no curbed sidewalk originally proposed, and the widely ended at my property. So, oh, and there was the tree, but that's on somebody else's property. Down by the curb is a pipe, grand pipe, and that was originally discussed that I was hitting that tree down. But I have since, since I cleared along the front, as I said at the last time, one of the last times, because I've cleared along the front and widened that road. That's become a, everybody's blind down there. It's, and you're literally the only thing slowing people down with that tree on the curb. And I do not want to take the tree down, to be quite honest with you. My status is up there, and everything's going to, but the tree is gotta be 150 years old, doesn't have a scratch on it, so nobody's ever hit it. Everybody knows it's there. It's not a safety issue. It's not on my property and not in the line of sight for the driveway. So as far as I'm concerned, the benefit, they do fly down there. And I feel the earth of myself sometimes above in a hurry, but the tree slows everybody down. So, and township, Richland Township, I believe, lines on the other side of that tree, widening a little bit where that keeps issues. So there is a little more swing room to get around there now.
But just to clarify, in the past, there were some discussions of limited improvements. This current application doesn't have any improvements.
I put them on the, I put them on one of the other submissions as far as curbing sidewalk, and last time before painting, I was told that
Yeah, I don't think, not the curb and sidewalk. I think it was more widening, thinking at the driveways like that.
That's fine. I just want to be clear what you're proposing and what they're acting on.
The whole 80 foot stretch, two driveways is going to get wide, so that will.
By default.
By default for the driveways.
These two driveways are going to get wide because the road is so narrow, it's hard to get trucks in there anyways, so either spot. So this is going to be widened to probably 60. This is a 200 foot stretch, probably 60 to 70 feet of that is going to be widened to the ultimate right of way, just so all these, so everybody can get in and out easily. So by default, then there's only about 120, 130 feet. That hasn't been wiped, that is, but like you said, as far as I was understood, had understood that board just wanted that wiped there.
So it was three, then.
That was two, three and four. Yep. Five is about lighting. There's a township requirement to install streetlights, given any subdivision or land development. We're asking for a waiver to just install a single light with a solar lamp at the end of the driveways. There's no existing street lighting anywhere on Camp Rock Hill Road as it currently stands or Butter Creek Road. So we would revise the letter to just say no street lighting at all.
Would on the light?
The light, they are currently proposed at the, basically at the entrances of the driveway. So be whatever lot that lights on.
If someone wanted to take the bulb out later.
Yeah. And six and seven, we previously discussed, the shared driveways and the spillway lining.
And in some form, these were previously granted, right? Most, most of these.
Two, three, four.
Five, I think.
Five. Yeah, the, the difference is the limited road work that was discussed at one point. Not having a driveway lamppost, which is in the current one, and the shared driveway, or the, I'm sorry, the
Spill.
And the new one, two is one, right, with the, the property intersected right angle on the access?
Well, that's essentially, that's essentially the same as the lot depth, the width ratio on that. It's the same concept of the irregular lot. Technically, that should be thrown in there as what section number, but the same concept.
Any discussion on any of these? You're looking for approval for the waiver request?
And the plan. At this point, there's not really any major design changes in the plan. It's just notes pointing out a couple tables and adding a couple tables to the storm art report. There's not really any design changes necessary.
About the I think number one in the letter, right, was letters to residents. I don't know if they're all here right now, but especially if they have opinions about the.
We did mail those out, certified mail, so they have been notified of the development.
We need to have that.
Yeah, the office says, the office says. Ask for public commenting.
Yeah.
They might be here.
Yeah, okay. Is there any public comment on this one? From anybody? If there is, need you to come up to the podium, state your name and address, so we can hear you for the record.
Hi, I'm Aaron Wireback. I'm at 2409 Camp Rock Hill, the one on the corner there, so I'll out myself as the one that's not thrilled with the street lighting requirement. You know, be right in the corner of our property shining in towards the front of the house where the bedrooms are. You know, certainly I haven't seen any in any of your other developments around. I came out Ridge Valley Road here where you've had two recent developments and no lights there.
There are actually ones there.
The cul-de-sac or the other, the other.
One down, further towards forest.
Okay, well, you don't see too many others on, on back roads, and it's certainly a more rural area, your rural conservation there, so I'd be in favor of no light personally.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I'm John Polier. I live at 2570 Shoe Craft. And how far is the zoning going up to the creek? How much distance from the creek to the properties? What kind of buffer is?
So the creek actually runs through the southern part of the property.
I think, I think he's asking how far the house is from, from the creek.
So there's a, there's a floodplain. There's a bunch of steep slopes here. We're up the hill. There will be a area of woods between the creek and the houses that's existing that will be maintained.
Okay, you said the driveways went up to Butter Creek or?
They, they go to Camp Rock Hill. Just the property comes down to Butter Creek right here. So it's a proposed improvement stop all the way up here.
There's not going to be any driveways. You guys, did you get that form for endangered species?
Yes, we ran up in the.
Bob turtle?
Yep, yep. Yep, we went through all those clearances.
That's it.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else? All right. We're looking for Yeah, before we approve it, I just, could we just explore number, the number seven, the shared driveways, kind of understand both options. So I said, you know, and one of the options was, you know, the subdivision you know, waiver that needs to be requested. You said the other alternative was a additional waiver for separation. Is that correct, Steve?
I think it's separation from property.
From property line, okay.
I thought that meant the 20 feet meets. I thought Steve originally, because you need 10 feet for a I thought that met the twenty feet meets. I thought Steve originally, because you need ten feet for a driveway, and you need the driveway five feet off the property line. So all of those, those four have twenty feet going out to the road. So they can put a driveway in. If, if they ever happen to can't get along, maybe put the driveway on their own property and still be five feet off the property line on both sides. So there is no waiver needed, as far as I know, because Steve knew that. Twenty feet is enough for a ten foot driveway plus the ten foot on each, or five feet on each side. So all of them do meet that requirement. So if they can't get along, then they can split, they can be split.
Okay, thank you.
Was preferable, Steve? Which, which way, what would be the waiver to separate it? What would that?
Well. I, I was just, I'm just looking through the standards again, to verify whether it's five or ten feet from the property line. Um.
I think there's a requirement for distance between driveways. I don't know if that's what it would be.
Yeah, but five and five would be the ten, yeah. It might have been in a prior version of the plan that there was an issue with, with the separations and the distances. Um. I think there was, because I think in a prior version of plan, they weren't twenty foot, they were like fifteen foot wide.
It becomes more pavement.
It's a, it's a lot more impervious, right?
More impervious.
Right, I mean, it's strictly the, um, like, I don't want to say strictly, but. The concern in the past has been the future maintenance of the driveways and. Uh, those have become a problem at some point in the future. Technically, with the maintenance agreements, it's not the township's responsibility. It's the two property owners. Unfortunately, they generally show up. Here, township to complain about each other.
Right.
Which is why it was your intent before to at least minimize shared driveways where possible.
Yeah, well, my personal experience with, well. First, first person removed, but with, uh. Package delivery and Facebook Marketplace and all this stuff these days, people selling stuff on Facebook with shared driveways, and some people coming down. The neighbor invites somebody in, the other guy doesn't know who's coming here. People are showing up all times, day and night. You know, it just becomes, in that sense, a, uh. You know, potential nuisance for the. Person who's not doing that. It's a little bit different times these days than it was, because everybody's got Amazon coming four times a day, UPS and.
Everybody's, I get so many deliveries down, I'm all the way in the back and they're looking for the house out front. They're driving through the lawn to get down. They went actually through and down in my garage and back out.
Right.
I had to show them where the house was. I had to take them up to the house. They're coming anytime they want, so. Even with GPS, even with all this stuff, they can't find the house that's right out on the road to cry out loud, so. I think you can't stop everything and you can't legislate stupidity. It's gonna be, I mean, if somebody's gonna play over a driveway. The boy, in my opinion, the township should, should stay out of it. No offense, the township just saying, you bought the house, you knew it was a shared driveway. If you want to make, put something on the deed, we can put something on the deed. I have no problem with that, but. They knew, I mean, just like I'm in right now, I'm going to notify the people when they come down the shared driveway and they see it split off and they come to buy the house that I'm in sooner or later. I'm going to say, you do understand it's a shared driveway, blah, blah, blah. That's how it has.
Yeah, caveat emptor, I get it. I mean, it's understood, so, you know, buyer beware. But at the same time, if you can kind of negate some of those things upfront, it sometimes is a, is a help.
We could. This is not the ideal situation. Having the, having no access to Butter Creek doesn't make it ideal. In, in that sense, and, and the road, we went down that, that journey for a couple of years, and I really don't want that to be quite honest with you. I thought this is a good solution, and they do have the right. According to the code, when I submitted this first, put this in. They have to have the ability to be able to build that other rest of the driveway. If there's a conflict, both parties can fill, and that's what we have. We have eighty feet there. Everybody needs twenty feet to be able to build a driveway. And I don't know, Steve, do you find that?
Yeah, it is a five foot separation, so.
And then ten foot between driveways. It meets the requirements. There is no waivers needed, and it did meet the requirements when I submitted this. Township zoning allowed for this, so, um. I did comply there.
The legal descriptions of shared access easements, that becomes part of the deed, Steve?
It becomes a separate document that's recorded, that will be discovered under, with a title search. Oftentimes, we can't control what they include in the deed, but oftentimes, there'll be a reference to the easement in the deed. Um, but we generally don't control what the deed language is. But it will be a, a searchable, searchable document, separate.
You guys comfortable with that?
In these, is this day and age forcing people to cooperate? The risky, it's riskier all the time. Sad to say.
In the sense of.
Somebody does something somebody else doesn't like, and then now you gotta come. You, you, you're building three conflicts right in, into the plan when you don't have.
But you're not. They have the option. If there's a conflict, they can put their own driveway in. It's an option, and that's all I have to allow for. That's what we had to allow for. I mean, that's what the ordinance is for. There is the option. I can understand if I only was fifteen feet wide and you said, well, they can't meet the ordinance to, to change the driveway. They can put their own driveway in.
Just, just for clarity, doesn't negate the issue. The, the, we'll call it the third driveway, the one further to the right. That generally does meet our current ordinance, because it, it does allow you to do it, to connect them at the entrance.
That, yeah, that's not the one I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about the.
Right, so the one to the right technically.
How long are those driveways coming down on, on one and two and three and four?
One and two is about nine hundred feet, and three and four is about eleven, twelve.
Yes, at twelve hundred feet. Yeah. Like our cul-de-sac ordinance is eight hundred.
Yeah, yeah, but that's for how many homes.
That's, that's how we got to this point.
Right.
As we investigated multiple cul-de-sac options.
From the last time we were here, and that's a slight question before I, before I go into the county, before I go into the DE meeting and all my approvals. Is the board okay with this layout? Are you going to approve it? And I got a yes from the board back then.
I don't, I don't think the question is the layout as much as just the shared driveway.
Yeah, the shared, layout's not, layout's not the issue, sure. So let me ask you this. Will, will you still meet your impervious calculations if you run a driveway down for each lot?
We have, we have some. Spare already calced into each lot. I don't know if it's enough to cover nine hundred feet of additional driveway on two more lots. That's an extra eighteen hundred, or eighteen thousand square feet, right, impervious. So an extra quarter acre of impervious, that's a lot of extra impervious, and I don't know how that would work with the zoning calculations.
If that's the case, and you don't have the impervious surface covered, and you do, then you don't have the ability to do that.
Well, they could.
Split them. They're going to do it coming later. They need a waiver for.
Put their own sort of water system in at that time.
So they'd have to put a storm water system in and pave the driveway. If they had a conflict.
Well, I mean, more importantly be if, if they went over on the impervious surface ratio, because that's a zoning issue. Um, stormwater could be accommodated with a permit. But that, I, I think for you to be comfortable, you'd want to at least see that.
Yep.
Confirmation that.
That they could do it.
That they could do it and still be under the zoning requirements. And at the same time, you could check the stormwater, but as you said, additional stormwater could be put in if necessary. There's a lot of, just. In. You know, envisioning this, this isn't sort of your normal compact subdivision where all the water from the lots goes into the basin. You know, but they can't get all the water from that whole site. Over to the basin, so there's a lot of offset going on, so it's not. The matter of whether the water from that driveway gets into the basin, it's what the, what the offset is, how much the basin throttles back to compensate for. The impervious that doesn't go to the basin.
In, in this configuration, how wide are those driveways again?
I believe they're ten feet.
So you have two ten foot wide driveways. If I hope somebody can come in the other direction.
Well, that's the other thing, too, like. You know, what do you do with? You're going to work and someone's going home for it.
Like any long driveway, there's a little pull off area.
But what if you're in between a pull off area? Somebody's backing up or somebody's backing. I have a long driveway, too. I get it. I mean, longer than that. So I get it. I'm just saying.
I mean, I have it as a shared driveway now. GPS is coming out. I stopped at the road, let them out, and then the wind, it, it's. I mean, we, and we've become a society.
What, they can't back up?
Or you can't wait for them, but yes, we are. You're right.
I'm just saying, if you're in the middle of the driveway and he's in the middle of the driveway, somebody's backing up, right?
And that area of the lot is very flat, so you're not worried about backing off the hill or anything like that.
Like you would, I think what I'm hearing, you would be agreeable to showing some pull off areas on the two shared driveways. If.
Yeah, we could show that.
Okay, but yeah, they're just, they're not shown if you had planned for it. They should be shown on the plan.
Well, I would be more, uh. Yeah, ease to this, if we can show that it actually working, you can do what you say you're doing because of the. Distance and the impervious surface areas are doable, if you have to put two driveways in. Because if that's your, if that's what you're saying, then you need to be able to show that the impervious surface with the second driveway is within. The calculations.
We can do that. All we have to do is take some stone up around the driveway or around the existing garage. Parking area is huge around the garage. All I have to do is reduce that. So it, it is simple to do. There's no doubt I can do that. You're saying, if I had to put four driveways in, do we have enough impervious surface calculation?
Do you look at that hatched, hatched out area? That is what we have to remain around the existing bar.
And that's fine if you have it, then that's fine. I just feel more comfortable seeing that, knowing that. If that situation were to occur, and we're going to give you this waiver, the shared driveway, that there is the ability to rectify the situation when there is a problem. Because you said there was, but if you're not, if you can't with the impervious surface, then. Fair?
Yeah.
I think we already have the numbers on the impervious surface of the garage. It's, it's a huge amount, so they reduce that by six or eight thousand square feet. It's not, it's minimal. So what you might have in any.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what you have around the house, or anything like that. Would you guys be more? Mental hold for that?
Why didn't we like the cul-de-sac guy, Dave?
It kept getting longer and longer.
No, it kept getting shorter. I started at seventeen hundred feet and I ended at fourteen fifty.
Right, but still longer than the eight hundred.
Longer than eight hundred. I was trying to meet it there.
Always the rules are getting in the way, you know?
And much wider and much more impervious and.
Well, I don't know, Andy, thoughts on that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm torn. Certainly, the, the, um, comments are logical. I think I'm going to, uh, come down on the side of the. The township, though, in the letter, the township engineer sent, you know, with the, you know, that they're not desired by the township, and we took steps to codify it in the latest subdivision ordinance, so. That's where I'm at.
So not inclined to give it, or if they could prove that they could do it the other way, you would be.
Yeah, for right now, I'm not inclined to, um, to approve the waiver myself for my vote this evening.
Okay.
Would you be willing to approve it conditionally, as long as we can provide those calcs? Just in favor of keeping it moving, if that's the only thing?
Yeah, I.
So that, like, if we provide the calcs.
Believe me, I wanna, I wanna compromise. I wanna come up with something that, that, that will work for everybody, but. You're asking me today in the form as it's written, I would say, I'm not in favor of approving number seven on the waiver letter, and, um. Uh, in good faith, and I appreciate you looking to, you know, run those calculations and try to do something to make it better for, you know, more, more palatable. So I'd certainly consider it.
Would, um.
Can you do a conditional waiver?
You could, but if it's. You have some dissenting votes.
Right.
That might not pass.
Right.
I was thinking in my head, if they're willing to do those calculations, show the, uh. To bump out driveways, to be, you know, clear on the plan and come back next month when you might have five board members. Right? You, you could have a dissent or two and still.
Uh, yeah, there's only three of us tonight, so I mean, have a better shot with five. I mean, I would be personally, if we had the proof that it could be done, to be able to justify your statement of you don't need it because you can put it in. It's a little bit more palatable than, than what we have here in front of us tonight.
And you could always. Um, if you think you have the. Enough people in agreement. Uh, condition your approval or your recommendation for approval on them providing that information before they go to the board to supervise it. So the board is acting with all the information in hand.
But that would entail a vote tonight with.
Yeah.
Dissension.
Yeah.
Correct?
That's, yeah, that's sort of the.
Doesn't sound like I have that. Or we have that.
Now, the, the problem I have right now is, again, we, the last meeting I was at. Before I went through the county and state and all this other stuff to get this, all that stuff approved. This layout is exactly the same layout I presented to you guys back then, to the board back then.
I don't think we saw this, right?
Hey, you do.
Absolutely.
We started as a sketch plan.
Absolutely.
Was not shared.
Absolutely.
I think we voiced our concerns then, too.
All the driveways were shared back then, yes, and we, we talked about splitting. At that time, these two driveways were shared. We talked about splitting that, and that's what I did. But I was told by the board that you guys were, if, if I, you know, going through, the plan was okay, as long as I could get, you know, get. I went through two years of getting all my other approvals. And now we're back to the shared driveway, and I don't know that that's fair. Because these were on there. I have not changed the shared driveways, except for getting rid of the one. To comply with what you guys asked. So I'm having a, I, I have a little bit of a hard time. Obviously, this has been going on for what, eight years? I mean, you guys are tired of me, and I understand that. You're tired of this. I understand that. The share, shared driveways didn't go into place because I needed to save impervious. If I have to take stone up around the driveway or around the garage existing, I can make the impervious. If we can prove the numbers, I'm asking that this board honors their word to me originally, and you can go back and look at your meeting minutes. And approves this thing the way you told me you would last time. That's what I'm asking, and I think that's fair. You're fair in what you're saying. You want me to prove that I'm not taking a shortcut, and I'm fine with that. We can do that. If I do that. How do I know you're not going to come back with something else? That's my problem. I'm asking you to honor your words you gave me. Because I've put a lot of expense and a lot of time in getting to this point, and I have not changed the design. You saw this back then. Will you? Approve this thing if we can make the numbers work? Without doing a lot of major work, without tearing the building down, without all the nonsense. I'm just saying, hey, we got, you know, a ten by fifty area that we have to take up. In existing parking area, and now we're gonna, we need the numbers. That's something that you guys will approve.
What if you stone the area between the two driveways?
But then I got a road.
Right.
But then I got new, then I got a cul-de-sac, and then I got new requirements because you can't have lane.
What do you, what do you propose now between the two driveways?
It's a grass well.
Which would be nicer if it's all tree. The plan was tree on three seconds, you got three legs of grass, and they were going to get trees, so it would look nice. So it's, so it's separated driveways. If, if it helps. I can separate this driveway up here instead of back here, so now it's only five hundred feet instead of nine hundred feet shared. I can do something like that.
Personally, I would be fine if you showed us that you could do it. I personally, I can't speak for anybody else, but personally, I would be okay with that, and that would be fine. We have two other guys that aren't here, so I can't speak for those two, or obviously these two, so.
But I'm asking these two then tonight. I have been here before, you guys before a number of times with it, well, with this final plan, with this exact plan. Last meeting, we had the same conversation about these shared driveways. Last meeting, we had the same conversation about these shared driveways, and you had the same concerns. Understand them. But you gave, you told me I, you would approve this design if I could get everything else done. I'm asking you to do that tonight then. That's what I'm asking. Nobody, we didn't have this conversation. We had a little bit of conversation. We didn't have all this conversation last time. I could have gotten rid of, I could have tried something else maybe two years ago. Is that something you guys are willing to do tonight? Give us a conditional based upon getting the numbers to work out? Does that seem fair?
I want to make sure that we're consistent, certainly, in what we've said before. The, the last time this, I remember this, I remember at least a couple versions of this. The last time this was before us, you're saying, and I'd have to go, I, I tried to pull the minutes. It was, it's longer than, it's been longer than a year since.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I couldn't get it from the township website, and I didn't dig back through my paper files. The last time this was before us, was it with shared driveways or was it with the, or was it with extended?
Last time it was all shared driveway, three driveways for six homes. You asked me to split this one, and that's what I did.
Do you have one that?
I do not. I don't have my full file here.
Will the township give me, Steve, will the township give me the ability to come in off Butter Creek Road? Put a driveway? If I could put a driveway off Butter Creek Road, then I'd be fine with that.
You.
But crossing the creek and everything else.
It's not necessarily whether the township would allow you to, you'd need the permits.
Well, I get that.
For the floodplain crossing.
Get that. One oh five. What I understand, the township has the, has to say to, no, we don't even want the application.
Uh, I don't think that's exactly.
Okay, right.
Alright. I, I think there was a general consensus all along that it was not a good idea to have a driveway access to Camp Rocket Road because of the floodplain and the wetlands.
Yes.
But we acknowledged early on that you maintained a frontage on that street and that gave you the viable zoning lots to not have the multiple lane lots. Address that whole.
And again, when I submitted this, common drives were unapproved, accepted part of the township ordinance. As long as you had the extra land that it could be subdivided or could be split up later on. So then the only thing which again, I agree with your. If I can prove that I can get the stormwater, have the stormwater calculations right, that they can be split up someday if they ever need to be. Would you give me a conditional tonight?
Provided, uh, we, we want to be consistent, or at least I want to be consistent in how I speak here. So if we, if we, you know, if we did not voice dissent, you know, previously on this, and we can go back to the minutes of book, then I'll, I'll change to, uh, to agree with what Tim had suggested this evening.
And how about you, sir?
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with that.
Now, I remember you had to descend. I think you wanted a second, or you wanted a second access. You wanted a road. I think we had talked about. I think I remember, and I said we were down that road too many times, so.
We made it in front of us a number of times, that's for sure.
Yes, and I don't want to have to come before with another design, so. And I think the township would rather see six lots than thirteen lots, from what I understand, and I think the neighbors would rather.
I think we all probably agree that this, this is my plan is.
Okay.
So are all the other waiver requests?
Yeah, well, and they name again of consistency, if we've kind of approved them.
Yeah, I think most of my form, I'm not gonna, you know, I'm fine with them. So we're looking for a conditional waiver.
Well.
Request approval? Or a waiver request?
I assume you're asking for a preliminary final.
Yeah.
Approval. Okay, let's get that on, on the tape. Cause it's technically not a minor subdivision, even though it doesn't have a street. Six lots is a major subdivision.
But we have to have a waiver approval.
But the waivers. The waiver would be, the waiver of this for the shared driveway would be conditional upon documentation that the split driveways would meet all township zoning requirements. And then you're.
So we're one approval for the waiver of the individual request for the shared driveways. Right, separated from the other, the other is a separate waiver?
Mm-hmm.
Request for the other?
Yeah, you could do one way, one request that listed the waivers that were approved.
Yeah.
And one motion that listed the conditional waiver for the shared driveway.
And that then parlay's into conditional final.
Then your recommendation for approval would be subject to.
Final approval, subject to the other conditional.
Addressing the waiver.
Addressing, okay. So we're looking for a waiver, well, how about we do for a motion to approve the previously approved waivers that do not include the shared driveway?
I'll make such a motion, motion to approve the previously approved waivers that didn't include the shared driveway.
And for, and adding the spillway liner.
Right, I wouldn't, I wouldn't couch it as the old, usually the letter. Okay, the new letter less the shared driveway.
The new, okay. But I guess the question now comes in with the streetlights, right? If they want a streetlight at the end of that.
The letter says it includes it in there. Um, I can update the letter before we go to the board as well.
Did you update your waiver letter? I don't have it with me tonight.
Yeah.
Included driveway lamp posts or not?
It has the driveway lamp posts currently.
Okay. The issue is, do you want driveway lamp posts or not?
I mean, I get it, not having them out there.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I've been looking for it in other ones, but. I don't know. What is your thought?
Well, i- if I'm reading this right, it says that lamp post would be at the forks of the drive.
Yeah, that, those are good.
Which I assume they mean the house end, not the street end.
Generally, yes, because you're usually on a road where you have a cul-de-sac or a small road where you only have fifty foot of frontage or, or, you know, so yes, it's not.
Well, there is a fork.
Ideally, yeah, th- these loop where it connects together, these two come off, and there's a little loop, so it was gonna go in the middle there and the middle there. If. But again, a solar light in the woods, how much is that gonna do? Number one, I think we talked about that at the last meeting too. So it's two lights. It's literally two lights about nine hundred feet apart.
I think I was just to be consistent with other recent subdivisions we had that had been closer with, closer driveways. Alright.
I thought it was also when you return in off the road to see where it is, uh, or to have some sort of marker there.
I don't, I don't have a strong opinion about the lamps, and if the residents don't want it.
Yeah, I don't have a strong opinion about that.
Wish they're either.
So are you?
Yeah.
Do we just strike that?
Okay.
So can you just strike that, Steve?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
You're, you're approving all the waivers plus a full waiver of driveway lights.
Okay. So looking for a motion. Motion to approve the waivers on the waiver request letter dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Striking all street lighting.
Is it June thirtieth or July twenty-eighth?
It's July twenty-eighth. That was a typo on there. Sorry, it was resubmitted.
Yeah, there was two, I'm sorry. Okay, so July twenty-eighth waiver request letter.
Strike all street.
Strike all number five, putting, striking all street lighting. And not to include the shared driveway. Waiver.
Number seven on the July twenty-eighth letter.
Seven. Not including number seven, shared drivers.
Okay, so we're proving everything but five and seven.
No, five's, five's approved. It's just striking all lighting. Do I have said motion?
Uh, I'll make said motion. To uh, to approve the list of, well, to approve the list of waivers one through four, striking number five and including number six on the July twenty-eighth waiver request letter. Proving one through four, striking five, approving six.
Now we'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then secondly, I look for a motion to approve the waiver, conditionally approve waiver request number seven for the shared driveways. Based on the ability of the applicant to prove the impervious surface ratios can still be met with the inclusion of a second driveway for each lot. Or driveway for each lot. Right, Steve?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Do I have said motion?
If I could repeat it, I would say it. So I will make said motion to approve, cond- to conditionally approve waiver request number seven, provided the applicant can show that the additional driveways that meet the impervious surface calculations. That, correct? Should I say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. That was it.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Uh, no.
Wait a minute.
Okay.
You can second.
I will second it. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries. Okay, then.
I mean, any recommendation for conditional approval will be subject to the engineering letter and the waivers as just approved.
Okay, so then you're looking for a motion for conditional final approval, conditioned upon the approval of the waiver that was conditionally approved for the shared driveways and the completion of the review letter. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Make a motion to recommend conditional preliminary final plan approval contingent upon guidelines set out in number seven of the waiver request letter and all other items in the township engineer's letter.
Do you have a second?
Yeah.
I second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Before you leave, Tim.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Is it the, uh, the plans to expire? I had to send you that email today.
I thought that was sort of, I, I have gone on the website to try to find the letter. I actually wound up in East Rock Hill's website, found it easily. Read it right out before I read it with East Rock Hill. I can't find anything on White Cross. Do you have a left, do you have one of those forms that you can fill out?
Waiver, waiver request forms.
Give me it to you.
If you could, if it's not.
I couldn't find it.
Yeah, I think it's buried in the application package. It's not a separate document. Rock Hills compete against. A better website. She's gonna see if she can. It is, but they always have to make a recommendation to the supervisor, and this is their last opportunity to do it, so.
Alright, and I did call the township there for a talk to you, and I got a voicemail, and then I got new road through.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, I didn't have the handy to just email it to you.
I thought I didn't find it. I couldn't find the meeting, the agenda meeting, so I, and I will admit, I'm not sitting on a computer, but I posted it the same way I found it on Rock Hill, and I had it in my address. I wrote it in part about it. I was gonna cross these all.
It would have worked. It would have worked.
Okay, and that's for the green top.
That's for the green top.
Yeah, okay.
So we're gonna try to get that.
Try to get that.
About tonight and.
Yeah. That's the one that waves it all together, being the indefinite one. That's not the date specific one. Yeah, so.
And you'll, you'll submit that before the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, Tim.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, uh, select properties.
Good evening, Greg Adelman here on behalf of the applicant. We're here this evening for a preliminary plan for the property at one oh nine Augustine Road. Uh, the proposal is for nine units, uh, eight new homes with one existing still on the property. Property's approximately six acres. It's comprised of two separate parcels uh, located on Augustine Road backing up to Route three oh nine. It's all single family homes, property zone VR. Uh, Village Residential, the B one, single family detached dwellings are permitted use. We're looking at uh, lot sizes ranging between twelve thousand and fourteen thousand approximately for each of the single family homes. The footprint that is shown on the plan for the homes for just a proposed typical is about eighteen hundred square foot footprint. Um, overall, the proposed road, I believe, is twenty-six feet wide. Um, the, uh, road has sidewalks on both sides. Stormwater management is proposed as part of the overall development. Um, kind of see it on the plan. It goes back up into the open space. There's a basin to the rear of proposed lot nine. Thanks, Brian. And then it goes back into a level spreader to then discharge, uh, via sheet flow in the open space area. Um, there are some, uh, frontage improvements proposed in front of lots two and three, and then tapering, uh, after the road entrance, uh, before lot six. Um, overall, uh, we're looking at, since streetlights came up in the last one, we have two proposed streetlights, one at the entrance and one towards the rear of the cul-de-sac bulb as well. Um, in a nutshell, it's a pretty basic development, um, overall for the property. Um, everything complies in terms of impervious coverage, building coverages, lot widths. Uh, open space in the rear, we're looking at an approximate, make sure I get that number right. Uh, two point three five seven net acre open space, and that nets out the overall basin as well, since you can't include that in the open space calculations. There's a proposed homeowners association that would own and maintain the stormwater management as well as the open space. The road is, uh, designed and will be constructed to township specs, so it will be offered for dedication up to the township, whether or not they take it. Um, and, uh, overall, that's a quick overview of the project. We did get the review letter from Steve dated July twenty-fifth. We're happy to go through that. There are a couple of minor waivers. They are included in Steve's review. So we could probably take it in context if you want us to walk through that review letter at this point.
If you could.
Sure. Um, so starting at the discussion, items number one on the review letter is just stating what I just said about the single family detached dwellings used B one with lot sizes ranging between twelve thousand and fourteen thousand eight hundred thirteen square feet. Uh, the second comment is dealing with the open space area to the rear, as I said, two point three five seven acres net. Stormwater easement has been, uh, excluded. The, um, comment from Steve is that the proposed method of open space ownership should be identified on the plan, and we certainly can add that to the notes right now. I think what we just uh, identified in there is that the open space would not be further subdivided, be restricted. We can also add to that, that that would be owned and maintained by a homeowners association to be established um, as part of this development. Uh, number three is the stormwater management area identified in the open space tract. And again, restating that we've deducted that easement area from the open space net calculations. Number four talks about the, uh, disturbance of protected natural resources. There's some woodland clearing approximately zero point five acres. Uh, I believe that's actually for the stormwater management clearing. Is that right, Brian? The overall property itself, where the homes are going is not very wooded. It's the wooded areas behind it on the second parcel backing up to three oh nine. Number five has a couple of design standard comments related to the Village Residential zoning district. Uh, the first comment deals with the variety of uses in the open space area. Um, I think this is really for discussion for the township. Uh, we have protection of woodlands. Uh, we have protection of woodlands is proposed. Nothing else is proposed for active use of that open space area. Um, there's a comment later on here about recreation. We're, um, uh, willing to pay a fee in lieu of those improvements, and that's something for the township to discuss as well, for the planning commission to offer recommendation on. Uh, second comment under number five is the homeowners association, which we already talked about, and we agree that the homeowners association declaration would have to be drafted and then reviewed and approved by the township. Uh, the third comment, C, deals with the width of the cartway. The parking on one side is 26 feet wide road with a 46-foot wide right-of-way. That's what's required. Uh, we do have a note on the plan saying that we're proposing it to be dedicated, and that's up to the township, whether or not they would take that. Uh, D is dealing with the parking. Um, there is a parking plan sheet in the overall plan which shows that there are, uh, two parking spaces in the driveways and one parking space in the garage for a total of three. Um, what's required is two parking spaces per dwelling unit plus one spillover parking space. Uh, so we believe we comply with that. There are also, um, some limited on-street parking permitted, and that's actually located by the existing dwelling. We have a total of four additional spaces on the street that are permitted to be parked. Uh, E, under number five, uh, it's dealing with preference for garages to the rear of the dwelling units. It's not a requirement, just a preference on the village design. We have them front entry. We have a typical building, uh, shown on that that doesn't have the recess garage. Uh, we agree to change that to make it comply, so we'll add a, uh, revised building footprint on the plan showing that recess garage that would comply with the village design, a village residential design requirements. And then F, under number five, is sidewalks on both sides of the cul-de-sac and along the Augustine Road frontage, which we have provided.
Going back to C.
Sure.
The dedications, Steve, what's preferred there? Not to have it dedicated, dedicate the one dedicated, what's in that situation?
I don't have a preference. Township has taken most streets that aren't in age-qualified communities or some other larger organized community.
And this is not that, right?
Yeah, this is not. This is not age restrictive. These are just market rate. So it's really up to the township, whatever they just wanted to.
There is a D, the parking spaces you're comfortable with.
Well, they meet the minimum requirement. The one thing to remember, um, is why this is a little bit different. This is still village zoning, right? Which has different street standards than every other zoning district in the township. So that's why it has the odd right-of-way width and a slightly smaller street width. Um, the plans are always given to the fire marshal before they're finally approved to verify that they have no concerns with their access and parking, uh, you know, that that would be impeded to for their access. And we do always check with them. I don't recall because of the number of plans that we have from select.
Get a review?
It usually only comes back in an email, but I'll, I'll figure out with Greg if it, if we got that response, or we still need to get that response for this particular.
Sure, yeah, but we've made the cul-de-sac bulb, I believe, in accordance with township specs as well.
Yeah.
What's the overall length of the cul-de-sac?
Brian, do you know? It complies with the ordinance. I can't tell you exactly what the number is, though.
Yeah, I want to say 550, something like that.
I'm not as concerned with the cul-de-sac turnaround area as if they would have concern with the parking in the street, uh, with the access in the beginning. But we'll verify whether that went to the fire marshal yet, or we still need to do that.
Okay.
And we'll get his response to you.
Okay. Good.
Let's move on. Number six is the two waivers. Uh, one is a partial waiver for requests of street frontage improvements to accommodate discharge to roadside swale. Um, and basically, that's right in front of Lot 6. As we've, uh, done the road improvements in front of lots, uh, three and two, or two and three, um, in order to be able to provide an area where the pipe can actually daylight. We have to not improve the road frontage there. Otherwise, um, that gets pushed all the way down off the property, and then we don't have control over where the discharge occurs. Um, 6B, uh, says, uh, there's a driveway less than six, 60 feet from the right-of-way intersection. That's Lot 9. The driveway on Lot 9 is, I believe, 55 feet from the intersection. Uh, we held that because otherwise we'd have to then push further into the open space area, which would incl- increase the woodland disturbance. So we wanted to try to minimize that as much as possible, but also try to meet the 60 feet as much as possible.
Yeah, that was my question. So you, you considered shifting everything up?
Yeah, you'd have to, that's right. You'd have to shift it up five feet, which then takes you in that whole open space area if there's all wooded. I don't know if you see on the full plan set. So we were just trying to minimize the amount of clearing back there. Also, the grades work a little bit better. Oh, yeah, there you go. Thank you. The grades work better how we have it laid out. We'd probably have to push back and then make some more adjustments as well back on the stormwater discharge. So we thought five feet wasn't too far off from what was required. Uh, we don't believe there's any safety issue. I don't know if Steve thinks that 55 or 60 feet's an issue.
The question was forwarded to the township traffic consultant, and, uh, their comment back was just ensuring, uh, site distance on the front of the property, and they added a note to the plan.
Yeah.
Augustine's 25, right?
25 miles, bro?
Yeah.
I believe so.
All right. Um, so those are the two waivers. Uh, number seven, uh, deals with landscaping plannings. Um, that there are, uh, some trees in excess of 10 inches in diameter proposed to be removed. Again, towards the rear of the site. We've indicated that 90 replacement trees are to be installed. Um, the prior correspondence we had was a fee in lieu would be offered. Um, this is really up for the township. Do you want us to do the replacement trees on-site, uh, off-site, or accept the fee in lieu contribution? Um, so that's another one of those uh, for the township to comment on. Uh, number eight was a comment about traffic impact studies. It's, it's not required, so we haven't done this, uh, for this project. Um, Steve had a comment about some of the other projects being proposed by the applicant, but, um, we're treating this one as separate for this preliminary plan proposal. Uh, number nine is stormwater management. As I, uh, talked about where the stormwater is located, it's gonna be a basin towards the rear of the property with a level spreader being discharging the stormwater towards the 309 right-of-way. Uh, we're going through the stormwater comments. There's been some infiltration, uh, testing done as well. We still have to finalize um, those, uh, details as well as get the, uh.
Do we have the NPDS?
We have our NPDS from the county and DEP already, so, uh, we believe we satisfied on design. There was a comment about putting a split rail fence with a wire mesh backing. Uh, we have that on the plan as well. And then, of course, the last part to that is the stormwater management operation and maintenance agreement, which we agree would have to be recorded, and then it becomes binding on the HOA as they would be the long-term operator and maintainer of that facility. Um, number 10 deals with the, uh, sanitary sewer service for the project. We did submit a sewage facilities planning module for this project in May. I don't believe it's come through before the planning commission yet. Um, so it's still being reviewed and processed. Uh, it, it has been corrected as to who the provider is. There was a note on the plan here that said Perkasy Borough Authority. That's not correct. It's Telford Borough Authority. Um, and it is the public sewer service zone two. So we are still working through the sewer aspects of this project. Um, and since this is a preliminary plan, that's something that should be a condition of approval, um, that would have to be, uh, finalized prior to getting final. Number 11 deals with water supply. Um, again, Steve's making a comment that generally if you have something over 15 lots, you have to do a water impact study, but here we only have nine. So, uh, we have not done a water impact study because it's not required under the ordinance. 12 deals with public utilities being extended and showing offsite improvements, restoration. We agree with that. I don't think that's an issue. We would provide those details. Um, 13 is kind of a rehash dealing with the street improvements along the frontage. We talked about that already on one, on lots two and three. I guess one as well, right? The side of one. So, uh, we've talked about that and the fact that we have to have some, uh, additional daylighting there. That's why the waiver request is made for the stormwater discharge into the roadside swale. 14 deals with the recreation land. Uh, the ordinance says it's 1,400 square feet per dwelling. Uh, but the applicant is, uh, offering a fee in lieu of providing those recreational facilities.
Going back to 13, so you're proposing half overlay? On, that's on Augustine?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Is that?
That's not consistent with the ordinance.
Right, so why only half?
Because that's all we were really touching, but we're not ripping up the other side of Augustine. We're just doing in the, the frontage, but if it is what it is, under the ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, that's an ordinance item.
Uh, that's what it is, and we'll have to comply unless you give us a waiver.
I, I believe it was an error. I think we have a note to say pull with, with the hatch only went half way. So I believe that the intention was to.
Again, if you didn't give us a waiver, we didn't ask for it. We have to do it, so. Um, 14 was for the rec facilities. We're offering a fee in lieu. Um, 15 is dealing with cut-and-fill calculations about, uh, site balancing. 16, street lighting, we already talked about with the two streetlights being proposed, and we did show the acorn detail of the lighting fixture that's included as well on the plan. Um, 17 is the Bucks County Conservation District correspondence, and the NPDS has been issued. Uh, 18 is the proposed street name, which is, uh, subject to township approval as well as emergency services. 19 is the standard township development and financial security agreements, as well as the posting of any type of financial security necessary for the, uh, guarantee of the installation of the public improvements. 20 is legals, uh, rights away and for anything of the easements has to be signed and sealed by the surveyor. And then 21 is additional comments, uh, generated by this planning commission or, um, basically anything else, waiver request, street improvements, water service, sewage facilities. That's it.
Okay.
Can we go back to number 11?
Sure.
For a moment? So the recommendation was that the wells be tested or a, uh, water resource impact study be completed prior to final plan approval. Is that something that is a will comply?
Well, no, because it's not a requirement. It's only required if you have 15 lots or more, and we only have nine.
Right, right. Further, Steve's comment, nine of them real close together might be, you know, an issue, so is there any, you know, anything you're willing to do regarding that, you know, consistent with the office's recommendation?
Well, Steve's comment was to enter into a well-protection agreement. Uh, we haven't discussed that with the township. I think it's in the letter. I haven't discussed it with my clients yet.
I suggested that as an alternate to doing additional testing. There, there, I, my understanding, there's been at least one well replaced recently on the street. Um, so there, okay. Um, so there are some concerns in the, in the area. Um.
Yeah.
I did, well, I mean, just throw it out there. This also goes hand in hand with the, with the sewage question, was potentially, uh, if that ever gets resolved with Telford Borough Authority, there could be water available to this development at some point.
Correct.
And I assume if public water were available to the development, you would utilize public water?
I, I'm not sure, given that there's only nine and one of them is existing, so it wouldn't, uh, be able to handle that type of additional infrastructure improvement. So we may still do on-lot wells. Um, and also, as you know, things haven't been great with Telford Borough Authority, so we, um, are trying as much as possible to just focus on the sewer at this point with.
Talks about your correspondence with, uh, with TBA. So where, where is your court? Where you stand with Telford Borough on any of this sewer?
Well, it's really the township, balls in the township and Telford Borough's authorities court. We have talked to both the township as well as Telford Borough, and we continue to. Um, w- we believe that the sewer zone two is actually already being serviced by the township, so therefore it is open for public service. The township does not believe that. There's an existing agreement that's in place that has no expiration date between the township and the Telford Borough Authority. And right now, it's my understanding that neither entity is really communicating very well with either entity. Uh, we continue to have conversations with both sides. So at this point, we're gonna follow the required mandated planning module process, which is what we've submitted. We'll process that as far as we can. Hopefully, as we do that, the authority and the township will resolve whatever issues they have so that they can provide the service that's supposed to occur within this zone. Um, we don't have any control over a designated provider. Um, we don't have any say in it. We don't have any derivative standing to ask for anything else or from anywhere else. That's why we originally had a different provider in their Perkasy Borough Authority, because we felt that that could become the provider. We don't have any mechanism as an individual property under it to make that change. So we're stuck with the way things are, and we're hoping that as we go through the planning module process, the township and the authority, Telford Borough Authority, will resolve their issues. Um, and maybe that might require some assistance from DEP. I don't know. Which is why this is preliminary and not a preliminary final.
So with respect to the planning module, uh, the letter is in error. I made a mistake by carrying forward from the prior review. I've not received a planning module. Township does have an initial submission. We will be getting a comment letter very shortly. And I assume it'll be back on your Jennifer comment. If you remember, you've done it on other projects. It's that component 4A where you get the comment on whether it's consistent with the ordinance, is inconsistent with the Act 537. And those comments will be relative to whatever the status of the discussions between the, the township and Telford are at the time that, that you're filling out your form. And they'll have to address it as, as they see fit.
Right, and that's, that's part of that process. We then prepare responses. The township then includes it in the module, and we try to move it forward. I think that goes with anything that's in sewer region two. So as we appear before this planning commission on other projects as well that are in sewer region two, it's gonna be the same conversation until there's an overall resolution for the issues. All we can do as the landowner and applicant is prepare the planning module, follow the regulations, and submit it.
Big thoughts?
I, I empathize with your position, and, you know, but you're spending time and effort developing a plan that has no end in sight.
Well, that, that's the preliminary plan process, so the law is very clear that there's no basis to deny a preliminary plan for any type of remaining outside agency permit and approval. So our hope is that we get through the preliminary plan process, we get everything else lined up, and we assume that sewer is going to occur in accordance with how the township has set it up and how Telford Borough Authority has agreed to service. And when that happens, then we just come back for final. So that's really the way to do it. Um, in fact, I would tell you in some places, you come in with a planning module before you even file a plan. The townships are reticent to process that, because in my mind, you want to know your sewer. I think that's where you're going. You want to know, make sure your sewer is there. So we're stuck with putting the two together and then trying to work out the differences, hopefully, between the township and the, and the authority. I think that goes for anything in region two at this point, so.
Wait till your public comment.
All right. Have any public comment out there? Okay, remember, we need you to come to the podium. State your name and address.
Our competitor, 31 Augustine Road. I'm right to the left of them. So the question was, uh, he said something about testing for water or something. I saw you dug nine by nine by so many thick, deep, whole bunch of them around your property. Was that for perking? Was that for water testing? Or what was that for? I'm curious. And what was the findings? I'm curious about that. And, uh, the wells are my other major concern. Uh, we had three quarters of the people in our street redug with four or five, within the last four or five years. And I'm right next to them, and I- And I'm right next to them, and I think mine's the shallowest, so I'm very concerned about myself.
Just real quick, how, do you know how deep your well is?
About ninety-five foot to a hundred foot.
And anybody else?
Everybody else got drilled three hundred foot.
That's.
Brian? And I'm at ninety, ninety-five foot, meet ninety-eight. And I already had a problem when they dug the person next to me. It kind of my well, it dwindled. So I had to drop the well pump a little lower to sort of come out, you know, so I'm like right on the edge of it. You know, so it's been like I said, five or six people within the last four or five years. And they went down two hundred feet deeper, so that's going to be a problem, I think, so. I mean, I'm, this is America, I'm all for people, businesses flourishing, but we got to protect ourselves still. So that's my major concern there. And then the water runoff, which I'm sure these guys will tell you in the back, is horrendous as of right now already. So that's going to be bad. So that was my major concerns. And then the new road, we just got to bring the road put in. I mean, just put in. So I don't know how that's going, construction and all that's going to go. And then the tree rows between me and Brian, you know, to connect the property, like how that works, it gets cleaned up or something, all that stuff. So a lot of questions that we're looking forward to and want protection against our well too. That's what I'm looking for, like, so that's, you know.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? Please, please, the podium, state your name and address, please.
Two nineteen Augustine, Dave Rice. Quite a few concerns, besides I'm the last house on the left, so all the water that you're going to be dumping out in the streets coming down to my house. So that's a big problem. You haven't addressed how you're going to divert it with the stormwater management as far as parking. So when little Johnny has a party at one of those houses, you only have two parking spaces and then you're going to have the streets both lined with ten other vehicles in that little cul-de-sac. It's not going to be, so they're going to be jumping out on Augustine Road. We know how tight it is already. The newly paved road, beautiful. I'd hate to see it get tore up again just for, you know, houses that don't actually fit actually into design, because everybody actually still on Augustine right now, if they had a party and they had twenty people, could fit them on their property. You just park them in the yard. You wouldn't be parking them on the streets. So now you're impacting every neighbor that's driving up and down the road. The two parking spots, how long are they, or the driveways, excuse me?
To code, so.
So if you have an extended cab and you have an eight-foot bed truck and you have the tow hitch on the outside, will you be in the realm of the sidewalk? Be hit your ankles or your knees on the sidewalk as you're walking by on the sidewalk?
The length of the driveway is off the top.
Twenty feet is the front yard setback, so it's at least twenty feet from the right of way. Two or three feet to the sidewalk, probably from the right of the sidewalk.
So the truck could possibly be sticking out in it. So it could be sticking out in the sidewalk. So that's, I would say, a hazard. You got little kids, you're talking eight new homes, probably some new kids and driving around. That would be a hazard. Let's see, there was something.
The garage is going to be recessed ten feet, so it's actually going to be thirty feet, because that's a requirement, plan doesn't show this currently recessed. So that won't be an issue when revised the footprint, because the garage will have to sit back in the driveway with thirty people on.
Nice. So when people are parking their third vehicle, because you know some houses will have three vehicles when they park it down on the street, where do you get the emergency vehicles past each of those?
They have four faces.
Four.
There's two in the garage and two in the driveway.
How many people use a garage? I'm just going to be real, how many people use a garage?
Studies show sixty to seventy percent.
That's a good study, I'd like to know it. If you could send the link, that'd be great. Yeah, let's see what else. There was something else. Stormwater, oh wells, yeah, wells, yeah. I don't want my well to go dry. I mean, I'm a hundred and sixty foot deep, but yeah, I don't want anybody's well to go deep or to go dry. And are you willing to, if you drain those wells, pay for the depth reimbursement for the well drilling? Just questions. I mean, I could probably come up with a couple more, but it's just simple stuff. You know, I've been there forever, so I just don't want to see more water. I mean, I have pictures of all the ballast that used to be in my front ditch was, is now on the other side of my driveway. And that was twenty years ago. So now thinking of all the houses that had been up the street where the stormwaters come down and pushed all the ballast. We know ballast is big rock, so. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you.
Tara Stup, Augustine Road. I just have questions, like I always do, about the community. No one looks out for the community anymore. I moved on to Augustine because my cousins lived in one oh nine Augustine. And the owner was so wonderful and basically forced them out because the asking price was so high. But I've gotten to know everybody on our road and I loved our road, which is why we bought it. We're one of the newer ones on the road. Because it's a quiet road, it's a dead end, and it's a great place to raise our grandkids. Now we're going to have, what, nine more houses on it? That's not the environment that I thought I was going to be moving into. My next issue is the schools are so crowded. The classrooms, we, our kids range, grandkids range from two years old to the high school. When I bring them to the elementary school, the classrooms have gotten so much bigger because they're overcrowded. The high school now is offering cyber classes because the classrooms are too full. So we're going to be bringing in, you said, select properties has so many applications on my desk. You're in control of how many you approve. How many more? How much more land are you going to allow to be taken over by developments? This is our community. You are in control of allowing it to stop and keeping it as it was. I understand things are going to change. We're going to have to have some developments, but every damn ounce of, of land that we have does not have to be taken over by development. We can't fit nine houses. Our wells can't handle it. Our dry, our road that you just finally paved cannot handle it. We don't need to cram it in everywhere. You have the power to say no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Landis, one twenty-five Augustine. To Tara's point, this is just a non-factual, but we've all driven down these roads where you look at the, how it's laid out and you see a mobile home next to a seven hundred thousand dollar house and you go, what the hell were they thinking? And that's going to be our road. You're going to see hay bales and six acres and all of a sudden you're going to come to a development with a cul-de-sac and you're someday looking, go, what were they thinking? But at a meeting last year, we talked about the developments these guys are putting in. There's about a hundred and eighty houses gone in between lawn and ridge. And it was your request that we wanted to see how all those were going to tie together before we talked about any of this. And I don't know that that's happened yet. I know this gentleman just addressed that we're limited or they're limited to what the TBA and whatnot allows, but they should still be presenting a plan, so this isn't just haphazardly put together as all this comes together. I think we all were very skeptical when TBA lied to you guys about the seven houses that were failing on the Almont side of the hospital. And all of a sudden, sewer comes up. And then NPA says, NPWA say, nobody else is tying in going down the ridge except existing customers. Well, that changed in six weeks. So just like now, we have the water in the sewer. I mean, I can make the argument, if anybody went to the DEP presentation at Tyler's Port Firehouse this past year, because the quarry wanted to dig deeper. The DEP said that this region right here has a very limited and sparse water supply. He talked about replenishment, and if somebody digs a well, all you do is drain my well into your hole. And he basically advised us, and it's taped, that we really should limit the amount of housing that's being tapped into wells. Problem is now I just shot myself in the foot, because that opens the doors to say, hey, we need public water and sewer. And we all knew this was coming. And to Tara's point, our zoning is old, and as soon as water and sewer comes in, this place is going to explode. And I'm starting to feel like the developers are controlling the destiny of destiny of this township and we're not. And it's changing faster than we can get our hands around it. So my request would be is let's ask them for that plan. But I went dry, I'm three hundred and twenty feet. I don't think this township can handle, this area can handle eight more wells. And if, if, if it's not just based on me, the DEP, the guy from the DEP said that at the Towers Port Firehouse. He had maps, the data's there, the presentation's online, you can take a look at it. We don't have the water in this region. And he advised us not to put many more houses up that go onto, onto wells. One of my biggest concerns also is all the development that's coming, it's in our comprehensive plan. We are supposed to complete an Almont traffic study. This is the Almont Village that talks about where is all this traffic going to go? The infrastructure, just this alone, between the two seventy houses over on what I call Turning Circle Road and these, five hundred new houses approximately. So a lot of new cars on the road. There's no left turn lanes, there's no right turn lanes, there's no left turn signals, there's no shoulders on the roads. The development's going to get ahead of us and we're all going to go, why didn't we see this coming? I mean, schools in particular, there's no place to go with the kids that need to go to school. This catch bit, just now down to my level. This, this basin right here concerns me. I've yet to talk to anybody. The Kratz Farm, the one that they developed over near you. They get mosquitoes, they get, this thing's going to be in the woods, it's going to fill up with leaves, it's not going to drain. Steve came out and walked the back of the property with me when he had the blueprints. The basin, I think, holds fifty thousand gallons of water. We had a two-inch rain on four acres, that's four hundred thousand gallons of water. Where's it going to go? And it all comes onto my property. And it's, it's, I have yet to hear any of these situations where these catch basins don't smell. They're not a fester ground, there's no setbacks for catch basins. So this thing's, I think, fifteen feet off my back corner. So for somebody else to make money, I shouldn't have to be in the, on the opposite side of smelling somebody's residual income stream and have to worry about mosquitoes all the time. So I'd like us to talk about if there is, I know it has to be done, but there's got to be a different way than putting a catch basin in right off the back corner of a property line. There's a, there's a trough back there along three oh nine to drain, if we just drain it, there's got to be something else. But I am not a fan of, of these catch basins when they're that close to somebody else's property. The way that water currently runs out that driveway onto the road is already creates a river and it runs down the street and it pulls into our driveways and it's actually washed the end of mine around. You're going to have a lot more water going out that blacktop. I'm very concerned about the water mitigation plan for this, and I just don't feel like we've seen enough. And if it is an HOA, I can just see it now, I'm going to have a problem. I'm going to be on the phone, they're going to say, get a lawyer, because the township's not going to want to be involved. So it's going to be me fighting the HOA, trying to get them to manage the water control so it doesn't flood my backyard. So this is all going to become a problem for everybody downhill, and I just feel like there needs to be a better plan. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, we got one beating here.
I'm Cheryl Kigasi, seven Augustine Road, I'm at the top of the road. This is a nice, quiet little area that we live in. Our family has owned my house for sixty-five years. And now you people want to come in and destroy our little community here? Nobody is thinking of this community. I don't know if yous are looking at the money part of everything. I don't know, but this has got to stop over by Lawn Avenue and everywhere else. Go somewhere else and build, not in our little town. This means the world to us, and I know it means the world to me. And I see stuff going on. And the street lighting, no. This is a nice dark area and we like it like this. So much animals, wildlife has gone. I can't even walk my dog because of the traffic. He puts more houses in, it's going to be more traffic. When I'm walking my dog down the road, I could walk down and it would be fine. People don't do twenty-five on Augustine Road. So I'm constantly looking behind my back, because I don't know how fast. I almost got hit one time because somebody was flying up the road.
I keep trying, you know, Cheryl.
Huh? You, you know, but even like the FedEx trucks and the UPS trucks, they go fifty miles, I swear down. I see it all because I'm at the top of the road and I see it. So you people, all of you committees, planning, zoning, everybody, you need to get to know your people in this township. And who, when they want to build this stuff, come to them and talk to the people on the road first before they come here. Get to know your people and see how they feel first. And it's like Tara said, it's up to you to stop this. These people should go somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, Mary Ann Wilson, five hundred Johanna Drive. That should sound familiar to some people. Select property, we have an HOA where we are, one of the select property HOAs. We've recently been told that it won't hold up in court. So wondering what happens to this new HOA if they're going to change things? Okay, I'll talk to Greg about that. The other thing, these waste water things. My son had one behind his brand new house and they said, when he signed on the dotted line, oh, that's going to be drained, it'll be empty. It'll, when the rains, it might get full, but it'll drain out within a day or two. Well, they decided they're not going to do it, they're not draining it. So now his yard is mosquito hell. Absolutely horrendous. The sludge, now that we haven't had rain, there's all kinds of crap growing on top of it. There is no way to, like, the water doesn't move and it just stinks and it's full of mosquitoes. My two grandchildren are growing up with that crap in their backyard. I know in this area, because it's West Rock Hill, we don't have a lot of draining, natural draining because of all the rocks. When it rains, we have wet areas for a week up, up on, on Tower Road. And I'm like, that's all mosquitoes take. It doesn't even take a week for mosquitoes to infest an area. So I'm just, want you to think about putting more ha, more houses into areas that are already draining poorly. We're already having wet yards, wet roads. It's horrendous. Still haven't dealt with the trees yet, but that's the other, other meeting. And it just, it just is horrendous, this building. Select Properties is trying to take over the place. I mean, thirty-three years now we've been up there and it's, you know, nitpicky this, nitpicky that. They've moved to Utah and they're just trying to destroy the place now that all their kids are gone. They don't give a damn, they just want their money. And I'm sorry, that's how I feel. I'm just tired of them rolling all over us and leaving the place like, oh, who gives a damn what it, what it's like? We've moved up here to raise our kids. And now if it's, you know, put another two hundred and fifty houses in, who cares? My kids went through the schools, they've had small classes. Now let's put thirty kids in one of those classrooms, because it's legal to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Bill Knowles, six Augustine. I intend to stay in that house for the rest of my life, it's, it was my plan. But my sister also planned to stay in her house in Swedesboro, New Jersey. She was one of the earlier developments and her taxes were around six thousand. Some of her neighbors were around seven. They built so many houses that they had to make another high school or grade school, or middle school, I believe, too. And the taxes shot up to twelve and fourteen thousand. And everybody's gone. She's, she used to have Halloween parties, knew everybody. They're all gone, can't afford the taxes. I don't want to see that happen around here. You really have to look out for the people that have been here that can't afford fifteen, fourteen thousand dollars a year taxes. And, I mean, it could easily happen if you throw another two schools in, got to come from somebody, right? So that's my concern.
Thank you. Sure.
Yeah, I, I, Cheryl Kigasi, seven Augustine. I knew the owners of one oh nine. Alan Burn and Klinger, their house, they kept their lawn immaculate. This place now looks like a dump. They were so fussy, so meticulous, I'm sure they're rolling in their graves. You can't look at me, but I'm telling you the truth. Now, I know you don't care because it's all about money. That's all this is. But Al and Burna, I know, and I'm, you, some of you knew them. Their house, your yard was immaculate, now it looks like a dump. Because they're not taking.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So with, this is just a preliminary?
They're asking for a preliminary approval. We're not under time constraint here. If there are certain issues that you If there are certain issues that you would like further investigated or further answered, um, you could ask for that information.
Well, I think we need to have some sewer idea of sewer and water.
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer. Wells versus public sewer or public water? I'm sure we probably have whatever that.
That was infiltration testing for stormwater was not associated with wells. I think they found it didn't infiltrate stormwater, right? Right?
I'm not inclined to be preliminary.
As I said before, I mean, there's no, he said, he said, as far as what's going to happen with the sewer system and, you know, can be resolved next week? It could not be resolved in my lifetime.
Right.
I don't see going further without further clarity on what the sewer is. And then somebody mentioned, what's our overall plan for this? If we get these, you know, like one offs and you put the pieces together and it's like, out of this. You know, that's my secondary concern. My primary concern with this project specifically is sewer system.
Mine would be the water. Yeah, mine would be both. I just want to make some motion to. They're looking for a motion. They are, right. Do we have to vote on it at all or?
You are not under a time constraint.
Right.
If you're, so.
Do we have to say we're not voting?
Oh, it would be a table of motion to plan. I think if there's certain things that are your main concerns, which I think you just voiced, I'm sure they're very appreciative to know, you know, what issues you want further information or discussion on. Uh, but yeah, if, if you expect it to table, or your intention is to table the plan to make a motion to the table. You don't have to deny it, you don't have to approve it.
So I'll make a motion to the table of discussion pending further clarity on public water issue.
Second it. Hey, all those in favor? Aye, aye. Motion carries.
Thank you for your time. See you.
Have a good night.
Okay. Moving on. Tell you. Okay. Okay, moving on. Uh, if you're going to conversation, you move on out, we have to finish the meeting here. Thank you. All right. Old business?
Any old business?
I have none. No, I don't have any old business. Yeah, it's just, um, signatures.
Need one more, I signed them already.
New business?
I'll save it for public comment.
Okay.
You will potentially have applications for next month. Just, we have that green top development at Tim's other project.
Yeah. Anything else?
I, that's what I was just looking up on my list.
I wasn't working with the new plan submission rules.
Um.
Everybody figuring it out?
They're figuring it out slowly. I think in the, when the bugs are worked out, it'll, it'll work just fine.
Okay, good.
And you'll probably get that planning module, one or more planning modules back. So expect, at this point, I would expect that there will be a September meeting.
Okay. Anything else?
None for me.
All right, public comment?
Brian Landis, 125 Augustine. Just in general, um, we've been coming to these meetings. We should be here more often than we are. Um, but instead of waiting until, so we keep bringing up the same thing like this Allmont traffic study and just, is there anything we can do? Like the schools, I mean, there's, there's, I talked to a lady named Nancy at Penridge and there's this new development, 270 houses on Turning Circle Road or Park. There's, there's two people living next door to each other and they're going to go to different elementary schools, different buses. So as a, as a township, can we start getting ahead of the, the, the fact there's no shoulders? You sit at these intersections and everybody has to back up because an 18-wheeler is coming to, and maybe it is taking place. I know we got a study from Bucks County Planning Commission about a turning circle out here. And then we didn't embrace it. I'm not a big fan of them, Jersey's taking them out and we're buying them. But is there any way, knowing the proposed development that's coming? Again, Select Properties has 500 proposed homes in this community. And that's just one of the three pages on our bulletin that we send out of development. So let's say there's a thousand houses coming. Say it's a thousand cars, say they each have half a kid. It's 500 kids. I mean, is there any conversation we can start having to get ahead of this? And if it doesn't come, great. But, but if you look at our comprehensive plan and Steve and I talked about this last time, it's kind of a blueprint. We have hit, based on Select Properties houses alone, if he develops all 442 homes, we will have hit our 2,035 growth projections in West Rock Hill on the maximum side. The projections where this township is going to grow from 165 to, to a maximum of 445 homes by 2035. He proposes 442. So we're already 10 years ahead of where we thought we were going to be. So that means we got to catch up. And we have a website or Facebook page, West Rock Hill for Responsible Development. We know it's coming, but we just want to make sure that we're not sitting around going, didn't we see this coming? Why are we all sitting in a mile of traffic? And I know that's not all on your shoulders, guys, because there's a lot more of the planning commission than, I mean, this is the township. But it just seems that this is at our doorstep, that we should be having these deeper conversations. Instead of us coming here in a panic to point all this stuff out. But like the wells, I mean, that DEP red, uh, presentation they give was very insightful about this area and the lack of water. So we should all know that putting eight new wells is, is not responsible development. But there's probably a way to do it. Uh, but cramming them in here and having everybody else go dry just isn't responsible. So I'd just like to encourage us, I mean, as a community, we'd love to participate. But just start and look at all those things that we need to do to, if, if we're going to grow at this level and this magnitude, what do we need to do, whether it's infrastructure, roads, schools, the fire department, the police department? What do we need to get a hold of and what's it going to cost? Cause one of the things, and I don't know if we have a two and a half minute limit, but.
Yep, you're over it.
Sorry, Tim. One last point. So to the comment about taxes, uh, this is from Penridge's website. A student at Penridge costs 15 grand to go to school. The average property tax in Penridge School District is $42, $190. So for each kid that moves here, it's an $11,000 deficit for the township. So now again, not everybody here has a kid, so there's, it's going to be a balance. But we just need to know that if there's 500 houses coming and there's a half a kid, 250 kids, times 11,000 bucks, it's 1.5 million dollars. Where's it coming from? So that's to me, the kind of stuff that we need to be talking about versus the immediacy of these new developments. And so thanks for the extra half minute.
You're welcome. Thank you. Yeah, it's important to be involved. Everybody's going to be involved. You're going to be involved from this level all the way up through the federal level. So you need to vote, you need to participate, you need to come out to meetings all the time. We're here every month. We've been here every month for, how many years?
Eight, six.
Yeah. 10 plus 15, I don't know. So you need to step up and, and get involved. Elect people that have like minds, okay, that are against development, okay? Or want to change it, you got to change it. There's rules that we have to abide by. There's zoning. We, you know, we cannot deny an applicant. They come to us with a reasonable plan, you cannot deny them. Okay? Your elected officials, you get people, you elect people that have like minds and want to put it through and change the zone. No, we determine zoning at, at the supervisor level and then that, the zoning hearing board upholds what we.
So that's helpful. I thought it was the other, I thought it went from the bottom up. So it's DOS and back.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's important to be involved. Be involved. It's your civic responsibility. Okay? Too many people don't have it and then everybody complains when something doesn't go their way. Well, this has been going on for years. This started with the rezoning, I think it was 2005, right? Was it at the VC and the VR?
That vicinity, yeah.
Yeah. It started 2005. It's 20 years ago it started.
What, they changed their route from RA to VR that year?
Yes. Yeah, so this started 20 years ago. So this has been coming for 20 years. So it's important to be involved, be informed, stay informed, come to meetings, participate, voice your concerns. We love to hear it. We're volunteers. All of us up there are volunteers. So, you know, it's important to be involved. That's how you start to change. It's my, it's my thought. Okay? All right. Any other public comment? You're welcome. So. Okay, who public comment do I have a motion to adjourn?
You do. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Hey, all those in favor? All right, all right. Thanks. Have a good night, everyone. Thanks for coming out.